We have a public hearing at six o'clock on petition twenty-five dash twenty-one. Elizabeth Wood, Economic Development and Planning Director, request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to home occupation. This has been on our calendar for a while. We've given it regular course and further time. We had our last public hearing, I think, was on January eleventh. And we were pending referrals from the ZBA, but I understand that the city clerk did forward the ZBA referrals to the council. So Ms. Wood, I know that you're on the line, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I think, did I hear Carol Vittorioso as well from the planning board?
I am on as well. Nice to speak to you, Councilor Shalfo.
Nice to speak to you too.
In the red room.
So, would you like to just give the council and the listening public an overview of what this petition is and what you're proposing?
Sure. Sure. Essentially, it originated out of the mayor's office and, I believe, the building department as there were concerns that were uses in residential A districts that were not intended to be there as a result of our home occupation regulations. Now, there were specifically, I'll say the type of business, it was a hairdresser, I won't name the business, but that's a type of business that isn't intended to go in our most restrictive zone, residential A. But that was happening because there was a loophole in our zoning ordinance that was allowing different, more intrusive businesses into the residential A district. So this essentially closes that loophole. And if you look at the packet I gave you, there is a definition of home occupation office, and it refers you to the table of generally permitted uses. And it kind of makes it clear exactly what is and isn't allowed. You can go to the table, and if it's not specifically stated it's not allowed in that table, it's not allowed, and there's no question. Whereas before, it was a kind of fuzzy, and as I said, there were businesses that were creeping into residential A that typically shouldn't be there.
Councilor Shalfo, Zephyr, I just want to let you know, thank you very much for pitching in, by the way. But apparently, Council Dombrowski is now on the line, so we'll let him handle this hearing. Councilor Dombrowski, Councilor Shalfo, Zephyr opened the hearing and asked Ms. Wood to give us an overview, as you've probably just heard, of the proposed change that is represented by twenty-five dash twenty-one.
Okay, yeah, I did hear her overview. Sorry, I was a few minutes late. Ms. Wood, do you have anything more you want to add to this?
No, all I want to say is that in a residential A district, homeowners buy their homes believing that there's not going to be anything that is not character of residential use in terms of coming and going of vehicles, packages being delivered, clients coming to the house. It should just be residents coming to the house, not clients. And this kind of takes care of that.
Okay. And I don't know if you already have, if you did, just please correct me, but if you could just read for the record, how you want the amendment to read, or what exactly you're asking us to adopt.
Okay, so if you look back, it's been several months now, but there's a letter to the clerk, Caitlin Huffman, from November eighteenth, and that shows the exact language, I'll go through it with you, where the track changes are shown. And anything that is stricken is deleted, and anything that's underlined is new. There wasn't anything stricken, but we did add was the new language. So it's only, it's one long sentence, so I'll read it.
Okay.
It's "A definition of home occupation office," and it's now going to read, if this passes, "A business used conducted within a dwelling unit that is incidental and secondary to the primary residential use, carried on by the inhabitants of the dwelling, and does not alter the residential character of the property, comma, unless otherwise specified in the table of uses, and further complies with the criteria set forth under the general use regulations for generally permitted uses."
Okay, thank you. Moving on, I'll note that the planning board has submitted a recommendation. They have recommended that we adopt this amendment by seven to zero vote after their public hearing on February first. The zoning board of appeals, by letter dated February fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, recommended as follows, and I will read their recommendation. "The board did not feel that the language of this petition was specific enough to make a solid recommendation to the committee. The consent of the ZBA was that the language appears to eliminate all home occupation, and they believe that it needs to be more specific unless, of course, the objective is to eliminate all home occupations. From that regard, the board would not fully support the petition with the suggestion that some home occupation should be allowed with proper conditions or restrictions." That was the ZBA's recommendation. And the building inspector, by letter dated back in December twenty-third of two thousand and twenty, indicated his opinion that we should adopt the amendment. I'll go to, at this point, I'll go to members of my committee. Councilor Shalfo, Zephyr, do you have any questions or points you'd like to make at this time?
I do not.
Okay. Councilor David Cormier, how about yourself?
Yeah, I just, you know, I just wanted to thank, you know, Elizabeth for, you know, and whoever brought this to her attention for, you know, for working on this. You know, clearly, a residential neighborhood is for people to, you know, enjoy peace and quiet. That's why you buy a home in a residential neighborhood. Clearly, you know, based on what Elizabeth said, it sounds like we're going to have some people now, some folks that are going to be pre-existing non-conforming. Do we have a sense of how many people might be in that position, be pre-existing non-conforming? You know, how many people is this affecting? I mean, how many people are doing this currently that we know of? Do we know?
That would be a good question for the building inspector. I did invite him tonight. I'm not sure if he had a conflict or not.
Well, why don't I inquire? Is Peter Nile on the line by any chance? Is the building inspector on the line?
He is not.
He is not? Okay.
Yeah. But, well, thank you for checking. But, you know, I certainly, you know, this is great work, and certainly, moving forward, you know, people are going to be well aware of what they can and can't do. And anybody who's pre-existing non-conforming, you know, they can continue to operate like that, obviously, and then, you know, when things change, you know, that's, you know, that's the end of it for that particular piece of property. But, you know, certainly, I think moving forward, you know, we should adopt this so that, you know, we don't have issues in neighborhoods. So, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Cormier.
Council Dombrowski?
Yes.
This is Councilor Shalfo, Zephyr. I do have one question.
Okay, go ahead.
This is, thank you. Businesses that people are conducting in their homes, are they licensed? And this is probably a question for the city clerk. Do they get licenses through the city clerk's office? Caitlin?
Yes, they're supposed to. First, we send them up to Peter Nile, the building commissioner, to ensure that they comply with current zoning standards, and then they come down with a letter to us to file their business certificate.
Okay, so conceivably, we could do a count in the clerk's office about the number of licenses that have been issued, right? To get a sense of how many businesses operate in a residential zone. Is that right?
Yeah, we could, as long as they license, not everybody unfortunately does, but we'd get a good idea.
Okay, all righty, thank you.
Okay, does any other member of the city council have a question or any comments at this time?
I do, Council Dombrowski. This is Mark Bedanza.
Go ahead, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor. Ms. Wood, what does the word "unless," words "unless otherwise specified" mean? What do you mean by that?
What we mean by that is if you look in our zoning, there's a table of use charts. And the table of use chart, I'm sure you're familiar with it, lists the different types of uses that might possibly exist within the city. And then the zones, it cross-checks it with zones, and then it'll specify as to whether or not a specific use is allowed in a specific zone.
So...
And so, when this says "unless otherwise specified," it means that if it's in the table of uses and it says "no hairdresser," you can't have a hairdresser in the residential A zone, even if it comply, even if there's a loophole in the customary home occupation section of our ordinance.
Well, if it says, if it says "hairdresser" on the table of uses, and under RA it says "no," to my mind, already, no matter what you do, that's already illegal. In other words, that's not a customary home occupation if it's not permitted in the residential A zone. So, I understand, I think, what you're trying to say with that clause, but it would seem to me that it would make more sense that it say "and" does not alter the residential character of the property. That's one requirement, right? That's a requirement already, okay? The customary home occupation can't alter the residential character of the property. That's already on the books, all right? And I see that compliance with the table of uses is another requirement. So, in my view, it should say "and" as "and otherwise specified in the table of uses." In other words, or, I don't know, I don't understand what the word "unless" means. I think it should say "and does not alter the residential character of the property," is not, and is not prohibited in the table of uses, and "further, the proposed use complies with the criteria set forth under the general use regulations for generally permitted uses." Does that, does that make sense to you? In other words, you've got to comply, you've got to comply with...
It does.
Let me just say this, it's got to do three things. It can't, it can't be out of residential character. It has to be in compliance with the table of uses, or can't be prohibited by the table of uses, and it's got to comply with the general use criteria regulations.
That's the intent, yes.
All right. So, in my view, if it doesn't offend you or the board, I would say it should say "does not alter the residential character of the property, is not prohibited in the table of uses, and further complies with the criteria set forth under the general use regulations for generally permitted uses."
I think that does...
I mean, I think it's clearer. That's all I'm trying to say. I mean, I know where you're driving with it, I just want to make sure it's crystal clear.
Yep, I hear you.
Okay. Does that, does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that's all I had about it.
Okay.
And I would say, I would say this, though, Council Dombrowski, you want to add, is just because people are out there, you know, operating a hair salon, for example, in residence A, doesn't mean that they've acquired non-conforming use status. I mean, I think you could make a very good argument that a hair salon isn't permitted right now in residential A. So, there's no, if that's the case, there is no, they have not acquired prior non-conforming use status. I think what the mayor, the building inspector's office is looking for is an additional tool, because sometimes it's hard to enforce this stuff. But I think what this ordinance is a really good idea, and I think what it will do is make it easier for the building inspector to enforce it.
No, understood.
Hi, Mark, and Councilor Bedanza, and Councilor Dombrowski. Councilor Bedanza, I agree with you in terms of the change, I think that's a good one. This is Carol Vittorioso.
Oh, okay, thank you.
For the planning board, for the planning board. And I agree with you as well that I don't think it is a non-conforming use. I don't, I don't think it was conforming, it wasn't, it wasn't allowed to begin with. And I think it's easier, I think the goal of the planning board on this was it's easier to, for the building inspector, or for, I guess, the person who has the business thing, show me what, how I, show me where it says I can't have it. And now it just gives the building inspector that tool, as you called it, President Bedanza. But I agree with your changes. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other member of the council that has a question or a point they'd like to make at this time?
Yes, Council Dombrowski, Council Afrika.
Council Afrika, go ahead.
Going along with Carol Vittorioso's comments and Councilor Bedanza's comment, where does this leave us with those prior occupations that are, that are being operated now? You know, does that subject them to possible issues in a neighborhood? If there's a neighbor that complains about a particular business, what are the repercussions to someone who, who, my understanding, may have done everything in good faith and put money into their property to conform to the business they wanted, all based on the fact that they had a permit from the building inspector's office? What happens if there's an appeal process or something's happening in the neighborhood that there's an objection? Where does that leave the city, and where does that leave the owner of the property that's operating the business?
I think that's probably something that has to be taken on a case-by-case basis, but I'd ask Elizabeth Wood and/or Ms. Vittorioso if they care to respond.
Sure. This is Elizabeth Wood. I would say that if they already, if the business owner or the homeowner already has a license, you cannot revoke that license, because under the current ordinance, as it exists until this is changed, the interpretation of the zoning ordinance is by the building official, and he is the one that has the, is the designated person to interpret the zoning ordinance. His interpretation was that it was allowed, you cannot, you cannot revoke that license. So it would be only moving forward after this is changed, that new businesses coming forth seeking a license would be determined not to be able to have it. So you couldn't go backwards.
So, basically, it just, it doesn't validate what the two comments were prior. It's not a grandfathered use, then. It is a grandfathered use, you're saying?
Yes, it is. If it has a license.
It completely depends on the facts. Because Dombrowski's correct.
And you could have one set of facts in one neighborhood, and you could have another set of facts in another neighborhood, and now you've got a mess. You've got a, you know, no, it's not allowed on Mechanic Street, but it's, yes, it's allowed on West Street. I mean, I'm just giving, I'm just mentioning, there's no basis to that.
Council Afrika, this has been going on since the beginning of zoning. As long as it's been zoning...
I understand that. I agree.
There's been, there's been these kinds of problems. I can tell you, if you, if you're a ward counselor, or you've been a ward counselor, you know that these are the kinds of problems we get calls on. And right now, I'm sure there are people who have home occupations who have done it right, and have gotten a business license, and the building inspector had to pass judgment on it, and they're complying with what they said they were going to do. And if there's some, if it turns out that there's some differential between what we're passing, or what gets passed here versus what they're doing, then they may have a prior non-conforming use based on whatever the facts are. However, in most instances where there are problems, people don't have business licenses, or aren't doing what they said they were going to do, and that becomes a nightmare of enforcement for the building inspector and other people within city government, including the mayor's office. And all this is proposed to do is give those people, which is what they wanted, an additional tool to help bring some peace and harmony to these neighborhoods that are burdened by this situation. I know there was one up in Ward One, I believe, at one point, where someone was operating a roofing company out of their house. These are things that are obviously not permitted and not home occupations. This, I think, is intended to give the law a little bit more tooth, a little bit more enforcement capacity, and I'm all for that kind of a thing, because these can be real problems when they crop up in neighborhoods. You can't generalize whether it's going to be a mess or not, you've got to take each one of them, wherever they're located in the city, one by one, and judge it based on the facts and the facts alone.
Council Bedanza, I appreciate your comments, but I have been doing this for thirty-two years, so I have a little bit of experience in terms of...
I've been a solicitor, I was a solicitor thirty years ago to Council Afrika, so I'm well aware of what's going on in the city.
So we're, so we're in the same, some situation. We've seen a lot of the same, same areas, that some are yes and some are no, and that was my whole, that was my whole point in this. I mean, if we've, if, we don't want to use the word mistakes, but if there are mistakes that are being made, then it's giving ammunition to people in the city that have been denied in the past, and, and you know somebody two feet up the street that's doing it. I mean, it is a fact, whether you want to say it's case-by-case basis or not, it's a fact. I mean, it's just the way you interpret zoning. It's not all interpreted the same way.
The enforcement, the enforcement of zoning, like the enforcement of anything else, will never be perfect. I will hope, and I know that the city of Leominster and its public officials will do its best job to administer the laws of the city and enforce them in an equal application way to each citizen, giving them all the same rights that any, any citizen should be afforded. To suggest otherwise publicly right now is, to me, a disservice to the city.
Council Bedanza, I have a right to ask the questions, and I'm not dis servicing anybody, so let's not, let's not go there, please.
Just to make it an unequal application of the law to people, that's what you're suggesting.
Mr. President, Council Afrika, Mr. President, please stop. Let me, let me just interject here. Council Afrika, do you have any other, any other questions or comments for Ms. Wood or Ms. Vittorioso?
No, I think, I think my point's been made. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Council Afrika. Does any other councilor have a question or a comment they'd like to make?
Council Dombrowski, this is Councilor Shalfo, Zephyr.
Yeah, Council Zephyr, go ahead.
Great, thank you. I do have a question about license renewal. So, folks that do have home businesses, they've gone through the process, they've gotten their license, how, will this impact them when they apply for a license renewal?
Well, I think you, you know, I think you're, if you're grandfathered, you're grandfathered. So you're going to be subject to the prior, the prior zoning. So I don't think that if you're validly conducting business right now in the city, and you apply for a license renewal, this should not affect you. You know, if anyone wants to correct me, I'm certainly open to that. Does that, does that address your question, Council Zephyr, or do you have follow-up?
No, no, it actually does, but I do have a comment about the Ward One problem. Councilor Feckley and I were very involved in a big problem in North Leominster, and I realized that the building inspector was very much trying to help with the situation. It was a bad situation, and he, his hands were really tied. And if this can help in enforcing, you know, in the future, a similar kind of situation to help him, I would be happy to support it. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other councilor wish to be heard? Okay, if not, I'm going to go to the members of the public at this time. Is there anybody in the audience or on the line that wishes to address the council, either in favor of or against petition twenty-five dash twenty-one? Second time, is there any member of the audience on the telephone line that wishes to address the council, either in favor of or against petition twenty-five dash twenty-one? Okay, seeing none, Mr. President, I'm just going to do some quick subcommittee work. I, I think from my perspective, I agree that this is a useful tool. What I would like to do is bring this, close the public hearing tonight, bring this matter into subcommittee. I think there's probably going to be a slight amendment or two, and I, and I think the committee should, should work on getting the language right. If we're in favor of this, getting the language right...
Um, Council Badanza, I have a right to ask the questions, and I'm not dis servicing anybody, so let's not, let's not go there, please.
Just suggest, it's going to be an unequal application of the law to people, that's what you're suggesting.
Uh, Mr. President, Council Frida, Mr. President, please stop. Let me, let me just interject here. Uh, Council Frida, do you have any other, any other questions, um, or, or comments for Ms. Wood or Ms. Vittorioso?
No, I, I think, I think my point's been made. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Council Frida. Does any other counselor have, uh, a question or, uh, comment they'd like to make?
Council Dombrowski, this is Council Shalafu Zepfer.
Yeah, Council Zepfer, go ahead.
Great, thank you. Um, I, I do have a question about license renewal. So folks that do have home businesses, they've gone through the process, they've gotten their license. Um, how, will this, um, impact them when they apply for a license renewal?
Well, I think you, you know, I, I think you're, if you're grandfathered, you're grandfathered. Um, so you, you, you're gonna be subject to the prior, the prior zoning. So I, I don't think that if you're validly conducting business right now in the city and you apply for a license renewal, this should not affect you. Um, you know, if anyone wants to correct me, I'm, I'm certainly open to that. Um, but does that, does that address your question, Council Zepfer, or, or do you have follow-up?
No, no, it actually does, but I do have a comment about the Ward One, um, problem. Council Fekley and I were very involved in a big problem in North Lemester, and I realized that, um, the building inspector was very much trying to help with the situation. It was a bad situation, and, um, he, he, his hands were really tied. And if this can help in enforcing, you know, in the future, a similar kind of situation, help him, um, I, I would be happy to support it, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other counselor wish to be heard? Okay, if not, I'm gonna go to the members of the public at this time. Uh, is there anybody in the audience, um, or on the line that wishes to address the council either in favor of or against petition twenty-five dash twenty-one? Second time, is there any member of the audience on the telephone line that wishes to address the council either in favor of or against petition twenty-five dash twenty-one? And third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against, uh, petition twenty-five dash twenty-one? Okay, seeing none, um, Mr. President, I'm just gonna do some quick, uh, subcommittee work. Um, I, I think from, from my perspective, I, I agree that this is a useful tool. Um, what I would like to do is bring this, close the public hearing tonight, uh, bring this matter into subcommittee. I, I think there's probably going to be a slight amendment or two, um, and I, and I think the committee should, should work on getting the language right. Um, if we're in favor of this, getting the language right, um, and making a, a formal proposal to the council. Uh, so Council Zepfer, I, ask your thoughts on that?
I'm happy to, I'm happy to do that. I think, um, I think clarifying that language, if we can get it clearer, I think as the council president had recommended earlier, I think that would be a good thing, so I'd be happy to do that, take it into committee.
Okay, and, uh, Counselor David Cormier, your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I, I think I'd be more comfortable taking it in the committee as well and, uh, making sure that we've dotted our i's and, you know, crossed our t's, but the whole purpose is to make clarity and, and give another tool to be used, you know, when explaining to someone why they can't do something. So, um, I think it would be prudent to make sure that we, uh, have done all of our due diligence and, and, and everybody, um, agrees with the language, um, since there's some changes that were, uh, advised maybe should happen tonight. So we can do that, take it in subcommittee.
Okay, so I, I, I wanna thank, um, Elizabeth Wood and Carol Vittorioso for their hard work. Uh, and before I close the public hearing, um, is there any counselor, um, that has any last minute questions or, or points they'd like to make? Um, and, and of course, everyone, you know, obviously is invited to the subcommittee meeting as well. Okay, hearing none, uh, Mr. President, I'd ask that we close the public hearing.
Very well, thank you, Counselor. Um, I'm sure it's after six, uh, fifteen, so our next public hearing, Counselor Dombrowski, is on twenty-six dash twenty-one.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Petition twenty-six dash twenty-one. Elizabeth Wood, Economic Development and Planning Director, request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to lot frontage and adding a definition for paper streets. Um, Ms. Wood, is, I assume it's still on the line?
Yes.
Okay, and if you wanna give us, um, a, a summary of, uh, your intentions um, and the objectives regarding this proposal?
All right, this particular proposal originated from practical application in my department and within the building department. Uh, as we navigated, as staff navigated through approval not required lots for var- and various subdivision applications, um, there were discussions between myself and the building commissioner where we felt clarification was needed because we needed to determine exactly when a formal subdivision approval is necessary from the planning board. Um, this amendment essentially states that if a lot division occurs on a paper street, that that applicant may, must go through subdivision approval. You cannot get what's called an approval not required, an A and R approval on a paper street. Um, and this would make sure that when the lots are divided, that the street or the publicway is brought up to city standards, current city standards. Did you want me to read the, the definition we had for paper street?
Yeah, if you don't mind, just for the record, I appreciate that.
Okay, it's fairly short. It's two sentences. So it's "paper street." We currently do not have a definition for this, and this would add this into the zoning ordinance. "Any area shown on a recorded map or plat at the registry deeds but which has minimal or no physical improvement constructed shall be defined as a paper street. For construction to occur on a paper street, subdivision regulations apply." And the planning board, I will say, and you'll, you'll, you have this in your record, wanted to change the word "area" to "way," so it would be any way shown over a recorded map.
Okay. Um, I, I'd say that I, I, I have a little bit of confusion um, with, for construction to occur on a paper street, subdivision, subdivision regulations apply. Um, it seems to me that that might, um, involve, um, grading or repairing or maintaining the paper street, um, which obviously, um, is a situation where there may be houses already on that paper street. Um, and I, I don't know, I, I think we might need to expand this definition a little bit. Um, I don't know if you wanna give me your thoughts on that?
Well, what I could say is, is that historically, there, and Carol has been here far many years longer than I have been, but from what I understand is in the past, there have been residents on paper streets that have gone to the zoning board of adjustments and gotten a special permit and then been permitted to build on a paper street. This would prevent that from happening. This would require that, yes, you do need to bring the street up to certain current standards, and if there are already houses on that street, you, it would, it would be construction in front of that house. So it might include grading, it might, um, include, um, building in, in the right of way, um, herbs, trees, um, other infrastructure, drainage that needs to be there, and it might impede on current, um, residences. But, um, the subdivision regulations would, would occur, um, they kick into effect, and so there would be notifications, everybody would be involved in the process, a very public process.
Okay, but what, what you're talking about, though, is if someone is, wants to build a home, a new home on a, on a public street, on a pri- on a, on a paper street versus, um, someone who just wants to, uh, repair the potholes or, or maybe regrade it after, after the winter season. I mean, you, you, you would, you would, um, notice a distinction there, am I correct?
Well, most paper streets contain little or no improvement. Um, I guess, I would say they probably vary throughout the city, but most, most have little or no improvement.
No, I understand that, but I, let me, let me give you an example. So there's that, I forget the formal name of it, but it's that Bad President's Subdivision by the Ballpark, where they got Polk Street and Garfield Street and Hayes Street. Um,
Cleveland?
Those are all paper streets. They're all lined with houses. Um, and there's no way any of those streets are gonna be able to be brought up to the city standards. Um, but people live there year-round, and every winter, there's the, there's problems with the street. You know, there's potholes, there's grading issue-
Paper street.
The paper street. So I don't think you intend for this, um, amended article to preclude people or require people to bring a paper street up to current standards if you're just trying to fix potholes. I'm just trying to make sure that there's-
No, 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 no.
Okay.
It would impact that, no.
Okay, ju- um, this is Carol Vittorioso, Council Dombrowski, but I, so I suppose, um, just as the, uh, the last hearing on home occupations, when President Vidal suggested the cha- changes, and I'm sure you'll make them in that form or another form in the subcommittee, suppose we could do the same thing. If you wanted to be refined, we could say the construction of a dwelling or, you know, something maybe a little bit broader or narrower, however the council would like, so that it's not, um, compelling any type of, um, any developer in having to now improve the entire roadway or just trying to maintain a portion of it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking out loud, but I'm just thinking that perhaps, um, a sentence at the end of the definition, you know, that this shall not apply to, um, you know, regular, regular maintenance on a paper street currently in existence.
Sure.
Yeah, um, but, uh, let me go to my committee. Uh, Counselor Shalafu Zepfer, do you have any questions or points you'd like to make at this point?
Well, I think, um, I think Ms. Vittorioso just addressed my concern because I was confused thinking that somebody wanting to build an individual home on an existing paper street that had other homes on it. The way I read this change was that the person building the new home would be responsible for fixing the entire street. So that seems, um, I mean, that, that doesn't make sense to me. So if we can tighten the language up or make the language clearer, um, in subcommittee, I, I think that would be helpful because the language as it exists right now, it just, I think it's a little broad, and it's, um, it's confusing to me.
Okay, uh, my, myself as well. Um, Counselor, um, Zepfer, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Do you have any other points to make?
No, that's it. That's it, thank you.
Okay, okay, and, uh, Counselor David Cormier, the third member?
Yeah, thank you, um, Mr. Chairman. Um, you know, obviously, this is, this is important, you know, paper streets, there is actually a lot more of them out there than people realize. Um, you know, and I, when I think of paper streets, I think of the Lake Samoset District down in Ward Three. You know, some of the streets, some of the paper streets are, are developed, um, you know, which, to, to your point, Mr. Chairman, you know, kinda puts a thought in my head as well, a- and others are, are not, and, you know, I guess I really don't know what the, you know, no one knows what the potential of them is down the road. Um, but I certainly, yeah, I think we should take this in the subcommittee as well. Um, you know, I think we all need a, a better understanding of it to, to make sure that, you know, we are, um, we're making sure that we're stringent enough, but we're not doing people harm, you know, either. Um, so I just think I need to understand this a little better and, and-
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I understand what you're saying, Counsel Cormier. I, I can tell you that, um, you know, paper streets, at least in the law, are very confusing. Um, one thing that comes to my mind, and we may need to get the city solicitor involved, I, I don't know, but i- if the street has not been accepted by the city, then the owners on each side of the paper street own to the middle of the road.
That's right.
So if they own to the middle of the road and the city hasn't accepted it, I'm, I'm not quite sure, um, you know, how, how much we can regulate and not regulate, so I-
I agree.
I know that question is bouncing around in my mind.
And, and, you know, and to that, and to that, Mr. Chairman, you know, what happens if, you know, the people that own the street, you know, make it very clear that it will never be a public road? And, you know, it's for all intensive purposes, I mean, it's, it's, someone could call it, I don't know, a driveway? Or, you know, would, would, would a sh- could you, you know, start to say, well, it's a shared driveway? I mean, this stuff can, it, you know, you put all, you think about all these things, you know, a- after sitting here for, you know, a number of years and, and having dealt with some of this stuff, and, you know, you start to wonder, you know, what, what other life could this take on? Um, you know, I do, I, I'm starting to have a lot more questions in my head about it, and I think we need to talk about it a little bit more, you know?
Okay.
There's probably a lot of this out there. It's not far and few between. There's, there's quite a bit of stuff out there, you know, that's more than realized.
Um, let me, uh, let me open it up to other counselors on the-
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yes.
All right, so, listen, um, this really is, I'm not sure what we're the planning boards going here. There is, there is law in the state of Massachusetts that allows one to build on an unaccepted way or a paper street. But in order to do that, the planning board, not the zoning board of appeals or anybody else, has to make a determination before the special permit is granted to build on a road that isn't accepted, that the road has, not will have, has sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of the land, okay? I can tell you, because I've been, I, before I was a counselor, I was involved in cases where the planning board in Lemester gave special permits to people to build homes where the roads were not yet constructed. And in fact, I got involved for a group of abutters at one, on one occasion, when the planning board was getting ready to do just that, and I told them they couldn't do that. And what happened was, is they were good enough to get an opinion from Judy Cutler, who at the time was the, the Assistant City Solicitor involved in that sort of thing, and she agreed with me and opined that in order for the permit to be granted, there had to be a determination that the way in existence met all of the criteria for width and safety, grades, et cetera. That's, that's the law now. Um, I think where this is, where they're, where they're driving with this particular petition is to make sure and clear that no, that, that the, that no way will provide adequate frontage unless it does have the appropriate construction in place and in existence at times, special permit to build on that way is requested. It's already in our ordinances. This, this, uh, proposal doesn't do much different. Um, again, I would suggest if we were gonna adopt this, to just make sure that it says "an unaccepted street or way," uh, when the planning board has determined that such, I would add the word "then existing street or way" has sufficient width, blah, blah, blah. So I, I don't think there's really much con- the confusion I have here is why we're even talking about this. Uh, this has been the law forever, and-
But President-
Yep.
Sorry, President, but you can finish your thought, I'm sorry. This is Carol.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, um, 'cause I, 'cause I'm not sure-
Well, my understanding is for years, and I think this is where Elizabeth brings up that, you know, I've been around longer than she has, and I know she's not talking about age, but I am a lot older than she is too. But it's ba- basically, um, we've been treating this, and it's been as a, they, anyone who wants to build or improve upon a lot on a paper street has come before us with a special permit.
Right.
And I'm told, so, I mean, we may be, it may, this may, so far that, that, you know, we're on, we're on the second, we're on the second of our three or four, um, zoning ordinance amendments before the council, and it seems like it's a matter of semantics because it, it, they've come before us as special permits when in actuality they should be subdivisions. So I think that's what the issue is because when we tell people who have come in with special permits, "That's exactly right, President Vidal, so we've been telling them, you have to improve the way, you have to do this," and, and essentially, we've been telling them, basically, what you have to present to us is a subdivision plan, and it's not a special permit. So I think that's the reason. I, I don't know, maybe the easier thing to do is just eliminate it. Frankly, I don't even know if it's in the zoning ordinance that, or had been in the past, that you have to appear before the planning board for the issuance of a special permit to improve upon a paper street or a lot on a paper street.
It, it was at least, I don't, I haven't, in the latest iteration of the, uh, ordinances, I don't know if it's still in there, but it was. And I suspect it's still in there.
Well, that's right. So if the easier thing to do is simply eliminate it, and then by, just by operation of law, it becomes a subdivision, so be it. I think that might be, that might be the point.
I think, I think, I think there's a, I think there's a state statute that says that, 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 that supports the jurisdiction of the planning board to have such an ordinance. I'm almost positive that it's in the state statute as well, by special permit planning board. So I, I think the question is, is, you know, you just, it's very clear. E- e- I suppose you could do it as, certainly you could do it as a subdivision if you wanted to, but you could also do it by special permit, provided that you're willing to construct the road that, and the road satisfies the DPW, the, the DPW ultimately, 'cause that's what you'd rely on, as well as the planning board before you issue the special permit to build anything there. In the, in the case I had, it, you, you, the planning board denied the special permit, and fortunately, the abutters bought the property and the situation was, was over. But as long as it's done that way, I mean, I had a case in Lancaster where, uh, a competitor of PJ Keating went in and tried to get a permit to build a, a paving plan at the end of a road, and the, this planning board was getting ready to, uh, permit it. I said, "Where's the road? Doesn't exist." They said, "Well, they're putting a paving plan, and of course, there's gonna be a road." I said, "Too bad. There's no road." So it's pretty simple. I mean, if there's no road there, or they don't have a subdivision, uh, permit approved and bonded with security, then they don't get a permit to build. So I think we're saying the same thing.
I, I think, I think we are too. I think it's a matter of-
I can, I can provide, if the chairman wants to take this into committee as well, which probably makes sense, I could provide the statutory, the state statutory background, and maybe we can clarify it at that point.
Okay, um, is there any other, um, member of the council that has a question or a point at this, this, Counselor?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just have one more thing, so, I mean, I, 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 I think it'd be pretty safe to say that a lot of these paper streets probably would not meet the requirements, I mean, a, a lot of these streets are very narrow, you know, um, but basically, what we'd be saying is, a lot of it would become, a lot of it's just undevelopable.
Yeah.
I mean, you, I mean, there's some of the, I mean, I...
I don't disagree with that.
The, the key line, the key, the key language...
All I have in mind is Lake Samoset, and there is no way some of those peepers, paper streets will ever be wide enough to...
And that's why the special permit, and that's why the language, these words, "An adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of the land and for the installation of municipal services to serve such land and buildings erected thereon," they're not going to expect that a paper street that's going to have one or two houses built on it is going to need all of the same construction requirements that you would in a brand-new subdivision that has sixty houses in it.
Right.
That's, that's special permit type stuff, and the planning board has and is charged with making a finding on that special permit language, that what is constructed, ultimately constructed, is satisfies the DPW and them, that it's adequate to serve the needs of that particular use. So, so there is room for them to say, "Okay, well, we don't need sidewalks, we don't need curbs, but we do have pavement, it's not a crazy grade, um, it can be plowed, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera." That's the way it's been done here, and I'm sure in towns all over the Commonwealth.
I, I agree with that, is there, is there any other counselor that wants to, uh, be heard?
Counselor Angelini, briefly?
Counselor Angelini, go ahead.
I just, I just fear that if we're, let, let me give you an example, say there's a paper street that exists now, and has five homes that are constructed, some of them have been there ten or fifteen years, the next guy comes along, wants to put up a house on a lot, and we use the subdivision regulations, they're probably going to be required to post a bond to the entire street, so, I just think that, that kind of problematic and a bit unfair to that, to that, uh, the latest, uh, uh, potential homeowner, so, I would agree that perhaps, uh, subcommittee may be able to, uh, button this up, um, in a fashion that's acceptable to, to most.
And, and Counselor Angelini, this is Carol Vittorio, so again, we have had that problem, where, maybe, I, I don't know specific about a bond, but we've had a problem where someone has come in, wants to put in a house on a, on an unaccepted street or a paper street, and we tell them, "Well, we have to improve the street from..."
A huge delay.
You know, from A to, from A to B, and they're like, "Well, you know, Joe Smith lives, built a house thirty years ago, and he didn't have to do that, now I have to fix his road," so, I mean, it's, it's, you know, I don't know where you draw the line, at some point, somebody has to do it, um, you know, 'cause some houses have been there before the, before the ordinance was even in effect, and so that, that is the issue, and, and that, and I, and I don't know if that was, I can't recall if that was the reason we, frankly, if that's why we're trying to amend the section of the ordinance or not, but, I mean, you bring up a good point, I just want to let you know that we've, we've had this problem in the twenty-seven years I've been on the planning board.
Well, th- thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Angelini, any, uh, any other questions? Uh, any other counselor have any, any other questions? Um, hearing none, I'm going to go to the audience now, is there any member of the audience that wishes to address the council either in favor of or against petition twenty-six dash twenty-one? Second time, is there anyone on the line that wishes to address the city council either in favor of or against petition twenty-six dash twenty-one? Third and final time, is there any member of the audience that wishes to address the council either in favor of or against petition twenty-six dash twenty-one? Okay, hearing none, um, I do want to, uh, read some of the recommendations we got back, the planning board, after a public hearing, voted seven to zero in favor of adopting, um, petition twenty-six dash twenty-one, the zoning board of appeals also, um, by letter dated February fourth, twenty-twenty-one, um, issued, um, a recommendation that they were in favor of this petition, understanding any allowance would be under the planning board's jurisdiction, and decisions would be made on a case-by-case basis, um, and the building inspector also issued a letter, uh, in favor of this petition. Uh, just do some quick, um, committee work, uh, my, my, my personal feeling is that, um, I, I think that this, this amendment, uh, is going to create, uh, more questions than answers, uh, but I am, but I am certainly willing to take it into committee, uh, and discuss it, um, I'd like to compare, uh, as the president suggested, the, the statute that governs these circumstances, um, I'd like to look at any regulations we have that are currently affecting this and compare it with, um, the, uh, proposal, uh, from the planning director, um, and, you know, and perhaps, you know, perhaps we can, um, wordsmith an improvement to those conditions. Um, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, your thoughts on that?
I think that's, um, I think that process makes sense to me, I have, um, it's, I'm still confused about it, so, I think comparing the, um, existing state statutes to what we have locally, I think would help provide some clarity, so I think taking it into subcommittee is a good idea.
Okay, and Counselor David Cormier, your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I, I also agree, um, I think we need discussion about it.
Okay, uh, and again, I want to, I want to thank Elizabeth Wood and Carol Vittorio also for, for their hard work, I, um, I, I know they're coming across situations and they're trying to field answers to those problems, uh, before I close the public hearing, is there any other counselor that has, um, a, a, a final question or point or, or discussion they'd, they'd like to initiate? Okay, hearing none, Mr. President, um, I would ask that we close the public hearing.
Very well, um, we still have six minutes, uh, before seven o'clock, uh, well, why don't we just, I'll tell you what we're going to do.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, if you don't mind, I know that on the next petition, the planning board has requested that their public hearing be continued to March first.
Correct.
So, I think, um, I would rather just have one cohesive public hearing than, than split them up, so my recommendation is going to be that we, we continue our public hearing as well, so I could probably get that done, um, in the next six minutes unless I, you know, I get some opposition.
Let's check with your committee members if they're, uh, okay with your recommendation.
Okay, why don't I, uh, why don't I start this then, real quick?
All right.
Uh, petition twenty-seven dash twenty-one, uh, Elizabeth Wood, Economic Development and Planning Director, request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to solar, and, uh, there's also a request to amend table of uses as part of this petition, uh, there is a letter from the planning board, um, direct, uh, dated February second, twenty-twenty-one, where they voted seven to zero to continue their public hearing on this matter, um, so, so that they, uh, their subcommittee, uh, could make some considerations, and they're, they voted to continue their public hearing to March first, twenty-twenty-one, um, we can't make a decision until we have a recommendation from the planning board, um, my feeling is, as I, as I expressed earlier, I'd rather have one cohesive public hearing, um, first, I, I know, I know she's worked hard on it, so I'd, I'd ask Elizabeth Wood, um, are you, are you okay with, um, my rationale in this regard?
Yes.
Okay, and, um, Ms. Vittorio, so yourself?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you, uh, let me just quickly check with the subcommittee, um, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, are you okay with continuing the public hearing?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and Counselor David Cormier?
I also agree.
Okay, and, um, is there any, um, member, any other member of the city council that has a, a issue or concern with that? Okay, hearing none, I'm just going to go to the public real quick, uh, are there any members of the public on the telephone line that wish to address the council either in favor of or against petition twenty-seven dash twenty-one? Second time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the council either in favor of or against petition twenty-seven dash twenty-one? Third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against petition twenty-seven dash twenty-one? Uh, seeing none, uh, Mr. President, uh, the recommendation, um, would be to continue the public hearing, uh, I asked the clerk, uh, to give us a date after March first, uh...
Uh, my first meeting in March would be March eighth.
Okay, and the agenda's good for this?
Yes, we have nothing going on as of yet.
Uh, you are, what's, what time would you suggest, Madam Clerk?
Um, six forty-five P.M.
Six forty-five.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll vote on that when we get to it on, uh, your agenda, Counselor.
Okay, so, the recommendation is to continue the public hearing.
Very well, okay, um, and we'll wait a few seconds here, and, uh, we'll open the regular meeting in a moment. Okay, if you all rise and salute the flag with me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, divisible, Liberty, Justice, and Law. And I'll take a roll call of the councils in attendance, starting with Counselor Frida.
Present.
Counselor Dombrowski.
Present.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Present.
Counselor Fekley.
Present.
Counselor Angelini.
Present.
Counselor Hardinger.
Present.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Counselor David Cormier.
Present.
I shall be recorded as present, all nine counselors are in attendance this evening, does the chairwoman of records have a report?
I do, Mr. President, I have the minutes of the regular city council meeting of January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one, I find them to be in order and ask that they be placed and filed.
Very well, thank you, Counselor, um, I would now ask for a motion to go into recess.
Show move.
Counselor Hardinger, do we have a second?
Second, Counselor Angelini.
All those in favor of recess, please say aye, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, uh, we are in recess, and Counselor Dombrowski, you can take up your six forty-five P.M. hearing on twenty-eight dash twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. President, petition twenty-eight dash twenty-one, Elizabeth Wood, Economic Development and Planning Director, requests to amend the zoning ordinance to include provision for regulating commercial kitchens. Uh, we have with us, um, Elizabeth Wood, the Economic Development and Planning Director, uh, and I believe also, uh, Carol Vittorio also from the planning board is also on the line, um, Ms. Wood, do you want to give us a, a, an overview, um, of the petition, please?
Certainly, so, the, this petition originated from two sources, um, the mayor's office and our economic development coordinator, Nikki Peters, essentially, in, in trying to development, uh, develop economic opportunity for the city of Lemmister, it became apparent that there is a new, I'll call it new because it hasn't historically been a use, but, um, so a new use that has come about as, as the economy has evolved, and it's something called a commercial kitchen, and essentially, what it is, is if you, um, own an apartment building and you run out of apartments, you're leasing, you're leasing residences, this is leasing, owning, um, a, one business where you lease out multiple kitchens to entrepreneurs, and these are folks that normally wouldn't have, they might have a product that, that's... in which to produce it, so, they would come to a commercial kitchen, they wouldn't have to worry about meeting code because the code's already met in the kitchen, they don't have to worry about permitting because the kitchen already has the permits that you would need, they can just worry about making their product, making a good product, and then taking it off-site to distribute it to, um, a merchant, um, this also might be somebody coming in the form of a catering business, where they, um, serve weddings and functions, but they don't have a kitchen where they can produce their, their food, and they could come to a commercial kitchen and do that, um, so what we did was two things, one was create a, a definition of commercial kitchen, which you have, and the other was regulate exactly specifically where you could have a commercial kitchen once it came to the city, so there's a use chart also proposed. Did you want me to read the definition? And go over the use chart?
Yes, please.
Okay, so the definition of commercial kitchen would be, kitchen spaces owned by organizations or businesses that are open to community groups and local food entrepreneurs for use by anyone producing food, this includes manufacture for sale or wholesale, for example, to a supermarket or restaurant that will resell to the ultimate consumer, facilities shall be inspected and permitted by the local board of health and Massachusetts Department of Public Health Food Protection Program, they may sell their products to retail stores, grocery stores, restaurants, and that was the definition, and then where this is allowed, the logic behind this was, this should be allowed similarly, um, in places where light manufacturing is allowed, so the commercial kitchen and the use chart prohibits any commercial kitchen in the residential, rural residential, residential A, residential B, residential C, business A, or business B, the only zones you would be allowed to have a commercial kitchen would be in the commercial district, and that would be only with a special permit and site plan approval by the planning board, now, there are three zones where you, this will be allowed by right, and that's in the industrial, U1, and M2 zone, um, and then, of course, it's not allowed in the village zone, and that concludes, that's the basic summary.
Okay, um, we did get, uh, some recommendations back, um, forgive me for a moment, um, the planning board voted, uh, seven to zero in favor of granting this, um, I believe the zoning board of appeals, um, indicated that they needed more information, um, the building inspector was in favor of it, and I believe we also got, uh, a recommendation from, um, Marco Bengrazi from the board of health, is that correct? Uh, who indicated, "Good morning, Elizabeth," uh, this is dated, uh, way back, October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty, "Good morning, Elizabeth, on behalf of Mr. Canoe from..." "We do not have a recommendation with regards to changing the proposed definition of a commercial kitchen nor a recommendation for the zoning, zoning districts in which they are allowed," um, so, they, they basically seem to be saying, you know, if, if, we're gonna, we're gonna inspect whatever you tell us to inspect, um, was there any changes in what the building inspector, uh, or the economic development coordinator, um, had relative to your proposed table of use changes, did they have anything different to add, you know? Did they have anything different to add, you know?
To my [inaudible], I'm not sure, but I do know that Nikki Peters, the Economic Development Coordinator, is on the call, so we could ask her.
Hi, I'm here.
Oh, okay, thanks, Ms. Peters. Do you mind? Just, did you have any difference as to the table of uses versus what was proposed by the Planning Director?
No, I agree with what was proposed by the Planning Director. If it's okay, I would just like to add that the reason that we wanted to look at industrial zoning as well is because prior, or currently, I should say, without the zoning change, they would have to only really go where like restaurants would be, for example, and because we don't have this opportunity in the industrial zone, for example, we are losing some business to other towns, and this is a great incubator program to get some small businesses up and running that would then go into traditional spaces. So, it was my hope that this would pass so that we could, you know, we could gain some of this business and not lose it to other communities.
Okay, I appreciate that. Counselor Shalafu Zephyr, the second member, do you have any questions or comments?
I just have a quick one. Why not allow it in the village district? That's primarily downtown, right? I don't know if that's a question for Elizabeth or for Nikki.
This is Elizabeth. The thought was that it should be allowed in the same place as light manufacturing because it was a comparable impact to a community, and that was not allowed in the village, so it just translated to not allowing it there.
This is Nikki. So, from my perspective, I think it would be beneficial to allow it where light manufacturing is, but also in the downtown overlay and in the village district to make it, maybe with a special permit or, you know, some restrictive approval process there. But, you know, these commercial kitchens, they're really popular right now. So, you know, I think it's really space dependent. So, you know, it's not gonna be able to go in a tiny space. They're gonna need a large amount of space. So, it might, it's gonna be unlikely they're gonna go into some of these areas that we would be concerned about anyhow. But I personally would like to see it be less restrictive, not more restrictive, because I think the nature of the site itself is gonna be somewhat restrictive and just the sheer amount of space they're gonna need, if that makes sense.
So, that does, and I understand that they're very popular, commercial kitchens, and I understand the need for them. And I would see them being a draw, actually, to, you know, the downtown, the village district. So, I agree with you that maybe we want to be a little less restrictive, but thank you for that.
Anything else? Anything further?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Counselor Zephyr, you're good? Okay, Counselor David Cormier, the third member?
Yeah, I, you know, I don't have any specific questions, other than I think, you know, that this is definitely something good to add to our zoning. I mean, there's a lot of people, you know, these days that are looking to, you know, be their own boss and start their own business, you know, a food truck or something like that. They might, you know, be able to acquire the truck, but they have nowhere to, you know, legally, you know, prepare their food. So, this would be a good opportunity for them to, you know, find some space, you know, on a daily basis to prepare food and then, you know, bring it out, you know, into the community. So, I definitely think that this is certainly some good legislation. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Counselor Cormier. Does any other member of the city council have any questions or comments? Counselor Angelini? Counselor Angelini, go ahead. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to reiterate what Ms. Peters said. In my notes, actually, I had as a potential small business incubator situation. My wife was in the confectionery business for years, retiring last year, and many years in a row, we attended the International Fancy Food Show at the Javits Center in New York City. And a lot of the companies that were displaying products there started in commercial kitchens to test the market. It's a, it requires a significant investment to go out on your own. So, these are a wonderful way to get these small businesses up and running in a sense for the market that they've targeted. And eventually, the successful companies grow out of the commercial kitchens and go on to build their own facilities and employ a number of people in the community. So, I think it's a wonderful situation, and I tip my hat to those folks who are proposing it this evening. Thank you.
Angelini, this is Nikki Peters. I also wanted to sort of reiterate and point out a point that you made, which is that, you know, I think as we restrict home offices, where a lot of communities, people start these commercial kitchen operations out of their home. I don't believe we necessarily even really allow that in Leominster. If we do, it's very restrictive. So, this would then, you know, provide an opportunity for those small businesses to have a location to go to. Because right now, most of them can't even get started out of their home. The closest location is Worcester.
Sure. Thank you for that. Okay, thank you. Is there any other counselor that wishes to weigh in with questions or comments at this time?
Mr. Chairman, this is Counselor Arndinger, and I just have a question, if you don't mind.
No, go ahead.
It seems that this is, you know, the product, you know, produced here would have to be sold to a retail establishment. Is there any way or possibly that the person that makes the product, I'm looking at food, you know, which is a common, you know, common thing in commercial kitchens, to maybe have that person have a, like a small storefront and just sell their product directly to the public, but not have to go through the expense like Counselor Angelini was saying of building a commercial kitchen?
No, this, this actually doesn't lean towards that. I believe it, and it might have to do with approvals for health because if you have someone walking into a building, I know the commercial kitchen that I'm familiar with, and you may have read the article in the Sentinel Enterprise on Sunday. There is an example in Derry, New Hampshire, where if you even walk in the business, you have to wear a hairnet, you have to wear footed booties, you have to wear an overcoat. You can't just have regular foot traffic coming into this facility. It's not, and retail would require that.
Yeah, I'm not saying a retail within the commercial kitchen area, but a retail area off-site. And I think about, you know, Dunkin' Donuts, you know, in the gas stations, the convenience stores, we see them all the time. Their product is being manufactured in a large commercial kitchen someplace and transported, you know, safely and, you know, according to regulations to a small location off-site. Why couldn't a regular person say they have a great recipe for cakes or something that they want to make? They're very artistic, and they make them in the commercial kitchen and then safely transport them to a small storefront, which doesn't cost them very much, and sell their cakes publicly?
That's exactly what we're trying to do.
Yeah, I think
Okay, so that would be okay. Pardon?
Yes, sorry, yes, that would be okay.
Because earlier she was saying that it had to be sold to a restaurant or a supermarket or something like that. That's why I was questioning that. But that's great if they can do that. I think it's a fantastic idea. And speaking of articles, there was one in the Telegram Gazette about a person that built a huge warehouse type of facility for just that purpose, and it was primarily focused on the food trucks. And I think a lot of food trucks would benefit from this because I'm not so sure sometimes where they're making their food and how safely it's made.
Have a but residential areas that have large commercial kitchens is always a complaint by someone of smelling whatever was cooking in the kitchen coming out of the ventilation. So, I think in light industrial, that saw that issue as well. This is certainly an up and coming thing, and I'm familiar with the one that the At-Large Council had just mentioned in West Boylston, bought by a food truck owner in Worcester, who had been looking for a site. And he's, he's got an incredible business, and he's, it's just gonna take off, and we certainly should be, should be part of that business as well.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Frida. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, I will go to the public. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Second time, does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against petition twenty-eight dash twenty-one?
Yes.
Third and final time, is there any
Yes.
Number Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. You could identify
Good evening, Counselors. Sure, good evening, Counselors. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. For the record, my name is Travis Condon. I'm speaking on behalf of the North Central Massachusetts Chamber of Commerce, where a private nonprofit business association serving nearly seven hundred businesses and organizations of all sizes, many of which call Leominster their home. Our mission, as you're probably familiar with, is focused on advancing the region. We would just like to express our support for this petition twenty-eight dash twenty-one. We believe that allowing commercial kitchens will be a positive, not only for Leominster, but the North Central Massachusetts region. Commercial kitchens will certainly help spur new business ideas and give entrepreneurs a chance to launch a business that might not have the backing needed for a full establishment. This change will certainly attract entrepreneurs that are already here in the city just waiting for the chance to launch their creative idea, and we believe it will also spur interest for other entrepreneurs to bring their ideas to Leominster. Commercial kitchens can also serve as a great testing ground for potential restaurants and would certainly benefit the local food truck industry. You know, despite the unprecedented challenges that were brought on by the COVID- nineteen pandemic, we have seen several new businesses launched within the confines of Leominster in recent months. And having a commercial kitchen is one more tool that the Chamber believes could help keep that momentum moving forward as we work to build a stronger small business community in Leominster and the North Central Massachusetts region. That's all I have to say. I know it's echoing a lot of the same sentiments of everybody else on this call, but thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. [inaudible]. Appreciate that. I'm sorry I didn't hear you the first time.
That's okay. Thank you.
Third and final time, is there any other person from the audience on the telephone line that wishes? Go ahead, your name, please.
This is Melissa Taska. I'm the Business Development Coordinator for the city of Leominster.
Okay.
I just wanted to also support this measure. I think it's something important and something that would definitely be a draw for the community. To reiterate what Travis said, not just for Leominster, but for the surrounding area, which is obviously what we want. We want to be the area that people want to be in. And this is something that helps defray the cost of creating a kitchen, which in many times, or in many occasions, is cost prohibitive for anyone looking to start up a business around food. So, having a commercial kitchen space that certified, clean, and regulated would just be a huge asset to the community.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Traska. Again, is there any other member of the, wishes to address the council? Okay, third and final time, does any other member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against petition twenty-eight dash twenty-one? Okay, Mr. President, I'll just do some quick subcommittee work.
Very well.
Myself, I don't, I don't personally mean to bring this into subcommittee. I think it's well drafted. Table of uses are complete. But I defer, you know, to the other two members of Legal Affairs.
Counselor Shalafu Zephyr?
Uh, yes, my, my only, just got a concern, but what I would like to do is explore the possibility of expanding the use into the village zone by special permit of the Planning Board and site plan approval. I think bringing this downtown, you know, Ms. Peters talked earlier about the expanding farmers' market downtown, which pre-COVID was really doing very well. I think having something like that downtown where people can partner, you know, with, for example, people from the farmers' market, I think it would be a really good draw. And I, so, I would like to either, you know, amend it to include the village district by special plant, special permit, excuse me, of the Planning Board with site plan approval, or take it into committee and discuss it further. That's where I'm at.
Okay. Before I go to Counselor Cormier, maybe Ms. Peters or Ms. Wood, what were the reservations that you had in not going along with Counselor Shalafu Zephyr's suggestion?
Could you just quickly summarize that real quick again?
Uh, she, Counselor Yeah, Counselor Shalafu Zephyr is essentially stating that she'd like to see this amended to include the right to do this in the village district by special permit from the Planning Board as well as site plan approval. And I was just asking what the reservations that you two might have relative to that.
I don't have reservations, but you might want to consult with the Vice Chair of the Planning Board. She's on the line.
Counsel, Ms. Torioso?
I actually have no reservations with that, with Counselor Shalafu's suggestion. I, I don't mean to pass the buck, but I defer back to, to Ms. Peters if there was some issue from Economic Development.
Okay, I don't know, is Ms. Peters still on the line? Oh, okay, go ahead.
I am, yes. Um, no, I mean, I think, I think we would hope it to be less restrictive, not more restrictive, so I would agree with Counselor Shalafu.
Counselor Cormier, your thoughts overall on the petition, as well as what I had to say and as well as what Counselor Zephyr suggested?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I agree with all of it. I'm fine with it. You know, I think the less restrictions, you know, the better, and hope that we, you know, keep the door open for, you know, and just, you know, take things on a one-by-one basis as ideas come along. They can be reviewed and see if they're a fit, and then, you know, they can get what they need, you know, by way of a special permit. That's fine with me, and, you know, the overall, you know, petition, I think, is, so I'm okay.
Okay, thank you. I agree with Counselor Zephyr myself. I think there's a protection in place with a special permit and a site plan approval. I just want to ask if there's any other member of the council that wants to weigh in on Counselor Zephyr's suggestion?
Counselor Dombrowski, this is Counselor Feckley.
Counselor Feckley, go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I absolutely support the addition of the village district. As a matter of fact, when I first read this proposal, I pictured, you know, some of the storefronts on Main Street that might be vacant or become vacant, being used for this purpose. I think it would be exciting. There would be maybe smaller kitchens than would be in the light industrial or any, or another area like that, but I absolutely support that. I think that it might be very popular, as a matter of fact, so just wanted to weigh in on that.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Anyone else want to weigh in?
I just, this is Mark Badanza. I would just mention, I don't have a problem with including the village district. I mean, I do have I mean, I do have Village District zoning in my ward and not all of it is, is commercial in nature. Much of it is housing. Couple of good-sized housing, fairly dense areas where a commercial kitchen may be problematic. As long as there's a safeguard, a reasonable safeguard with a special permit and a site plan requirement, I, I think I can live with that.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Bedanza. Anybody else? Well, Mr. President, I, I think, um, it sounds like the recommendation from Legal Affairs would be to amend, amend the petition to reflect in the table of uses, um, that commercial kitchens be allowed in the Village District by special permit of the Planning Board and site plan approval. Uh, is that an amendment that you want to take up now?
Yeah. Why don't we do, why don't we do that now?
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll formally make the motion that we amend petition twenty-eight dash twenty-one to allow commercial kitchens in the Village District, um, by special permit of the Planning Board and by site plan approval, and I would ask for a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion made and seconded to amend twenty-eight dash twenty-one. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. This will be by roll call vote. Counsel Freda?
Yay.
Counsel Dabrowski?
Say.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counsel Feckley?
Yay.
Counsel Angelini?
Yay.
Counsel Arndinger?
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counsel David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. The petition is amended.
Okay. And Mr. President, at this point, I would, um, close the, uh, public hearing and indicate, um, to the council that the recommendation of Legal Affairs during this regular meeting would be to approve petition twenty-eight dash twenty-one as amended.
Very well. Thank you, Counselor. Yeah, we have one more public hearing, thirty-two dash twenty-one. Counsel Dabrowski?
Uh, yes. Thank you. Petition thirty-two dash twenty-one. Elizabeth Wood, Planning and Economic Development Director, request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the floodplain. My understanding on this particular petition is that the Planning Board has scheduled their public hearing for March first, twenty-one, at six forty-five P.M. So it's similar to the previous petition. I'd like to just have one cohesive public hearing. So my recommendation, um, would be to continue the public hearing until after the Planning Board's March first public hearing. I just want to make sure that, um, Ms. Wood and Ms. Torioso are okay with that.
Ms. Wood here, I'm, I, I am, I'm perfectly fine with that.
Okay.
Ms. Torioso, yes, that's, I'm fine.
Okay. And I'll just quickly check with my, uh, my subcommittee, Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
I agree.
Okay. And Counsel David Cormier?
Sorry about that. I also agree.
Okay. I'm, I'm required to go to the public. So quickly, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the council either in favor of or against petition thirty-two dash twenty-one? Second time, does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against petition thirty-two dash twenty-one? Third and final time, does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against petition thirty-two dash twenty-one? Uh, and just as a courtesy, are there any other counselors that have a problem with continuing this public hearing under these circumstances? Um, seeing none, Mr. President, I'll, I'll turn this back over to you and ask the clerk, perhaps, to give us a proposed date and time.
That would bring us to March eighth. Depending on how much time you need, Counsel Dabrowski, would you prefer five minutes or four than when we previously scheduled, or fifteen in between?
Let's go with five.
I think, you think five? Yeah.
Yeah. Let's go with five.
So I would recommend six forty P.M. on March eighth, twenty twenty-one.
We can always go over, which we always do. All right. We'll take that, Counsel Dabrowski, and, under your, uh, regular calendar. Uh, we will now conduct the public forum. Thank you, Counsel Dabrowski, for all your work, by the way, in your committee.
Well-
Public, the public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on a matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying a specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions, however, at discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address the City Council in the public forum? And a second time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the City Council in the public forum? And a third and final time, is there any member of the public wishes to address the City Council in the public forum? Hearing none, I will declare the public forum closed. We are back in session, starting with communications from the mayor and C fifty-five.
C fifty-five, Dean J. Mazzarella. Mayor, request that appropriation of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars be made to the fire overtime account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
C fifty-five is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Mr. President, I will be abstaining from this petition, so I would ask that you defer this to the clerk of finance, please.
Very well. I will then refer this to Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, first time on the agenda, we have regular course, please.
Very well. Uh, C fifty-five has been given regular course. Moving on to communications, starting with C fifty-six.
C fifty-six, Dean J. Mazzarella. Mayor, request that the City Council submit a request pursuant to Article Two, Section Eight, Paragraph One, Clause One of Amendments of the Constitution as amended by Article eighty-nine, the state, uh, that State Senator John Cronin and State Representative Natalie Higgins file special legislation with the General Court on behalf of the city seeking to exempt the positions of police chief and police captain from the civil service law, general law, chapter thirty-one, as follows. An act exempting the positions of police chief and police captain in the City of Leominster from the civil service law be enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives and General Court assembled by the authority of the same as follows. Section one, the positions of police chief and police captain in the City of Leominster shall be exempt from chapter thirty-one of the general laws. Section two, this act shall take effect upon its passage.
C fifty-six is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Um, thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course, um, with a referral to the, um, acting police chief, uh, the mayor, and, um, each of the union heads of the various unions involved with the police department.
Very well. C fifty-six has been given regular course with a referral to the acting police chief, the mayor, and the heads of all the various police unions involved. Okay. Moving on to-
Mr. President?
Yes?
Would we, um, to the Chairperson of, um, Legal Affairs, would it make sense to refer this also to the city solicitor?
Um, well, do you have any objection to that, Counsel Dabrowski?
Uh, what would the, um, specific, uh, what would the specific question that we would want to ask the solic, city solicitor be? I, I, I think at some point maybe, but I'm just wondering now what that would be.
Well, I guess to ensure that how, what, however the act is, well, you know, however the act is written or whatever is being proposed by the legislature, that that, it conforms with what Copeland and Page would recommend or suggest. I guess we could do it now, we could do it later. Um, it, it's-
We, we might, we might never get to that point, too. So maybe Counsel Dabrowski's suggestion is okay, that maybe we'll wait and see if, how far this progresses, and if it gets to that point, Counsel, we could take it up and ask Copeland and Page to take a look at what's actually being voted on.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Thank you, Counselor. All right. Moving on to appointments.
Counsel President?
Yes.
Can we just at the public hearing for the, um, special act, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I keep forgetting that.
It's okay.
Um, the public hearing, uh, they're requesting, uh, um, public hearing February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, at six twenty-five P.M. I, I'm wondering, Mr. President, I, I usually don't offer to change that, but the last time this was before us, it took us a long time to get some of these referrals. Um, I'm wondering if we should just maybe schedule the first public hearing in March, but that, that's just a suggestion.
Um, well, hard to know. Um, I, I probably, like you, I don't have a lot of information on this right at this juncture. Um, why don't we stick with the twenty-second? If we have to continue it, we'll continue it, but in case it's something that's on a, it's a faster track than we know, maybe safer to keep it on the twenty-second.
Okay. That's fine.
All right. So the suggestion, the suggestion, and I'll check with members of your committee. Counsel Shalfo Zephyr, um, are you okay with recommending this for a public hearing on the twenty-second?
I am.
And Counsel David Cormier?
I, I am as well.
Pretty unanimous recommendation of, of the Legal Affairs Committee to schedule C fifty-six for a, a, give it regular course and schedule it for a public hearing on February twenty-second at six twenty-five P.M. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of scheduling this matter for February twenty-second at six twenty-five P.M., please say yay. Yay?
Yay.
Anyone opposed? By a vote of nine to zero, the public hearing is established on February twenty-second at six twenty-five P.M. And thank you, Madam Clerk, for getting that square. Now we'll move on to appointments, starting with the, uh, with William O'Connor as, uh, to the position of Chief Assessor, and I'll refer this to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Uh, would you like me to read it?
Yes, please.
Yes, we'll have the city clerk read that first.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to check confirming the mayor's appointment of William Connor to the position of Chief Assessor for the City of Leominster for a term of three years, effective immediately.
And this was referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Yes. Thank, thank you, Mr. President. Um, uh, first time on the agenda, a regular course, and what I would like to do is have, um, Mr. Connor come down, um, or come virtually to speak with the council so we can see how things have been going since he's been interim assessor and, uh, you know, what his plans are for the future.
Very well. Do you have a date and time that you suggest for that, um, or is that something you just want to arrange with Mr. Connor, Madam Clerk?
Um, I can have him down at our next meeting, February twenty-second, at, right before the special act public hearing. It's six twenty. Is that a-
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. So, um, the appointment of Mr. Connor is given regular course with an interview on February twenty-second at six twenty. Um, if it's okay with the Chairwoman of Ways and Means, Madam Clerk, why don't we take, um, the measures confirming the appointment of Thomas Bissonette through Douglas Cormier in block?
Okay. A measure confirming the mayor's reappointment of Thomas Bissonette to the Recreation Commission, term to expire four fifteen, twenty twenty-four. A measure confirming the mayor's reappointment of Maureen Donatelli to the Recreation Commission, term to expire four fifteen, twenty twenty-four. A measure confirming the mayor's reappointment of John M. Chicaloni to the Recreation Commission, term to expire four fifteen, twenty twenty-four. A measure confirming the mayor's reappointment of Lionel A. Sharpentiere to the Recreation Commission, term to expire four fifteen, twenty twenty-four. A measure confirming the mayor's reappointment of Jeffrey O'Neil to the Recreation Commission, term to expire four fifteen, twenty twenty-four. A measure confirming the mayor's reappointment of Douglas Cormier to the Recreation Commission, term to expire four fifteen, twenty twenty-four.
All right.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Counselor Angelini, um, I, I'm just reviewing the letter that we, an email that we received that we request to remove Maureen Donatelli and Jeffrey O'Neil.
Yes, I'm aware of that, Counsel Angelini.
Okay. My, my apologies.
No, no, that's okay. It's always good to be reminded.
All right. So, um, I'm going to refer all of those to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, what I would like to do at this time is take all of these reappointment requests and give them regular course, and then we can make the changes at the next meeting when we, um, uh, have disposition on them.
All right. Very well. So the, uh, measure confirming the mayor's reappointment of Thomas Bissonette, Maureen Donatelli, John M. Chicalini, Lionel A. Sharpentiere, Jeffrey O'Neil, and Douglas Cormier have all been given regular course. That, uh, brings us to the emergency preamble, Madam Clerk.
Emergency preamble, C fifty-seven. Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, request that appropriation of two-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand dollars be made to the Police Department overtime account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
Okay. So this is an emergency preamble, is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Um, well, first of all, you need to take a vote to accept this as emergency.
Why don't you give us a little background on what the mayor's requesting, why the mayor's requesting an emergency preamble?
So this was, uh, submitted to us on, uh, February fourth, um, twenty twenty-one. Uh, that's when it was received in the city clerk's office. And I'm gonna, I am not going to read the entire explanation. It is very detailed. Uh, it's, you know, a bit lengthy, and I appreciate it all. Um, it definitely gave a good explanation, but I'm not going to read it all into the record. It is a public document if anybody has any desire to read it, and I know all the council should have received it. So basically, what has happened is, uh, due to the, um, the executive order that President Biden, uh, signed, um, regarding the safe policing for communities, um, as well as the ratification of the acts of the, of the legislature of twenty twenty, um, chapter two fifty-three, which is the police reform, um, the Leominster Police Department has sudden unbudgeted, unbudgeted needs, um, and, uh, the, it's an accreditation process, has returned as well as the need to immediately make necessary process and personnel changes. So just to summarize, those two things are going to create overtime, um, for certain training, uh, to, to occur, and it needs to be started, I am being told, by February thirteenth. Um, so that is what we, um, that is what the, the gist is of this money that is needed.
Okay. Any, any questions by any members of the council before we, I proceed to a vote on this? Okay. Hearing none. I'll, I'll do this by roll call, um, well, relative to accepting this as an emergency preamble, starting with Counsel Freda?
Yay.
Counsel Dabrowski?
Yay.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counsel Feckley?
Yay.
Counsel Angelini?
Yay.
Counsel Arndinger?
Yay.
Counsel, uh, Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counsel David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of eight to one. Uh, we've accepted the emergency preamble. Um, does the chairman have a report?
Yes, Mr. President. Um, C fifty-seven, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requested the appro, an appropriation of two-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand dollars be made to the Police Department overtime account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. So, um, you know, just as I stated a, a minute ago, um, because of President Biden's executive on safe policing for safe communities, as well as the Legislative Acts of twenty twenty, um, chapter two fifty-three, which is the police reform, in Massachusetts, um, there is going to be certain training that is going to have to begin. Um, and so this was not, obviously, none of this existed on July one of twenty twenty when the budget was passed, and a lot of this is going to have to be done above and beyond, um, the normal hours that, uh, that the, um, Police Department, um, will be working. It's going to have to be done on overtime, some of it. Um, therefore, um, obviously, you know, it's another mandate that's not funded both by the federal government and the state. Um, you know, it would be my, even though I don't agree that it's an emergency, I, I believe that based on the time that this was received by the city clerk's office and given the fact we have a special meeting Wednesday anyway- based on the time that this was received by the city clerk's office, and given the fact we have a special meeting Wednesday anyway, it should have, I think procedurally, I, I would have rathered regular course it tonight and then vote on it Wednesday at a special meeting that was already going to happen, but that's obviously not the will of council. So, um, it would be my recommendation, we certainly have really no other choice, considering that it's mandated, that we grant C dash fifty seven, and I will ask you to check with members of my committee.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
I agree with the chairman.
And Counselor Angelini.
I'm in agreement as well, Mr. President.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C fifty seven, or is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call. Counselor Frida.
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski.
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Counselor Feckley.
Yay.
Counselor Angelini.
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger.
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier.
Yay.
I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. C fifty seven is granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of two hundred and fifty six thousand dollars be appropriated to the Police Department overtime account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
We've heard the request for the adoption of the order. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting the order, please say yay, yay?
Yay.
Opposed by a vote of nine to zero, the order has been adopted. There are no petitions, first time on the agenda. Uh, we are now, uh, with matters before the City Council, starting with the City of Leominster financial report.
President, um, I did inquire with the city clerk today. Unfortunately, I do not have an updated, um, uh, financial report as the, um, the, um, comptroller was not in the office today, so I will have a, an updated one for our next meeting two weeks from now. Thank you.
Uh, perhaps on interim, Madam Clerk, if you wouldn't mind, uh, getting a, a report, uh, hopefully tomorrow or Wednesday, and sending that to the council, circulating it to the members of the council, that would be appreciated.
I can try, Counselor, but answer, but their office is closed due to quarantine.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, I will talk to you about that.
Okay.
All right, um, moving on to matters under Finance, starting with C fifty four, is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C dash forty four, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requested an appropriation of two hundred and ten thousand dollars be made to the street resurfacing expense, this city funding expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Uh, so what this is, is I believe last time, uh, we had some money for street resurfacing. I did mention that this was coming down the pipe. Um, and I have a very brief letter that was sent here by the mayor dated January twenty second, twenty twenty one. Uh, members of the City Council, I am requesting your support and additional two hundred and ten thousand dollars for this year's paving program. The additional funds would cover the cost to complete the alternate on the bid list. This includes Lindell Avenue from Campabasso Lane to Highland Avenue, where we completed underground infrastructure upgrades this past year. It also includes paving of Robin Road and Theodore Drive, which are part of our commitment to accept and pave unaccepted streets. Um, so basically, you know, the mayor has, um, you know, in the past, obviously, unaccepted streets have been a big issue. Uh, those two have, um, fallen victim to that, and they are in very, very rough shape, and I know that the council president, who's also the ward forecounselor, I'm sure is very pleased that they are going to get taken care of. Um, so, um, that it, it would be my opinion that we grant, uh, C dash fifty four and, and get these roads fixed, and I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Very well. Counselor Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
And Counselor Angelini.
I will make it unanimous.
Very well. Thank you, Counselor. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C dash fifty four. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call vote, starting with Counselor Frida.
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski.
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Counselor Feckley.
Yay.
Counselor, uh, Angelini.
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger.
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier.
Yay.
I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. C fifty four is granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of two hundred and ten thousand dollars be appropriated to the street resurfacing thing expenses, fee funding expense account. Boy, that's a lot. The same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
Heard the request for the adoption of the order. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting the order, please say yay, yay?
Yay.
Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, the order has been adopted. Moving on to legal affairs in twenty five dash twenty one, is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Petition twenty five dash twenty one, Elizabeth Wood, Economic Development and Planning Director, request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to home occupations. Um, we had a public hearing earlier this evening. The public hearing was closed. This is a matter we are going to take up in subcommittee, um, during, uh, uh, later on in the meeting, during new business, I'll, I'll, uh, schedule that, Mr. President. Um, but for now, my rec, recommendation is further time, and I would ask that you confirm that with my committee.
Very well. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yes, I agree.
And Counselor David Cormier.
I also agree.
What, what, Counselor, if you don't mind, why don't we establish the, um, well, you, you want to establish the date for your subcommittee meeting? That's what you're talking about, right?
Correct.
All right, so right now, we're going to just vote in front of you.
We, we, yeah, I mean, we could do it now. I, I, you know, it's, it's up to you.
All right, well, we don't, that doesn't, uh, need a vote, um, so I'll leave it up to you. How's that?
All right, we'll do it, we'll do it later.
Okay. All right, so they heard the recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee relative to twenty five dash twenty one to give it further time. Any further discussion? All those in favor of further time, please, further time, please say yay, yay?
Yay.
Those opposed, twenty five dash twenty one has been given further time by a vote of nine to zero. Moving on to twenty six dash twenty one, is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Petition twenty six dash twenty one, Elizabeth Wood, Economic Development and Planning Director, request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to lot frontage and adding a definition for paper streets. Uh, this is similar to the previous petition, Mr. President. We had a public hearing earlier this evening. The public hearing was closed. We're going to take this up in subcommittee, um, and I would ask that this matter be given further time, and, um, ask that you poll my committee.
Very well. Uh, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
I agree.
And Counselor David Cormier.
I also agree.
You've heard unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant twenty six dash twenty one further time. Any, is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of giving twenty six dash twenty one further time, please say yay, yay?
Yay.
Anyone opposed by a vote of nine to zero, twenty six dash twenty one has been given further time. Moving on to twenty seven dash twenty one, is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Petition twenty seven dash twenty one, Elizabeth Wood, Economic Development and Planning Director, request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to solar. Uh, along with this, there's also a request to amend Article three table of uses relative to solar use in Article fifteen, section twenty two dash one oh four of the solar ordinance. Um, the planning board has continued their public hearing to March first. Uh, we cannot make a decision without a recommendation from the planning board. Um, therefore, um, we, we've already established the continuation of the public hearing to March eighth, twenty twenty one at six forty five P. M. Um, given those circumstances, my recommendation is further time. Ask you to poll my committee.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yes, I agree.
And Counselor David Cormier.
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant twenty seven dash twenty one further time and establish a hearing, public hearing on March eighth at six forty five P. M. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of giving twenty seven dash twenty one further time and establishing the public hearing, please say yay, yay?
Yay.
Anyone opposed by a vote of nine to zero, twenty seven dash twenty one is given further time with a continued public hearing on March eighth at six forty five P. M. Moving on to twenty eight dash twenty one, is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, I am, Mr. President. Petition twenty eight dash twenty one, Elizabeth Wood, Economic Development and Planning Director, request to amend the zoning ordinance to include provisions for regulating commercial kitchens. Um, we voted to amend this petition, um, to allow commercial kitchens in the Village District by special permit of the planning board and site plan approval. Uh, the recommendation, Mr. President, is to grant petition twenty eight dash twenty one. As amended, I would ask that you poll my committee.
Very well. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yes, I agree.
And Counselor David Cormier.
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant twenty eight dash twenty one as amended to include the Village District subject to special permit of the planning board and site plan approval. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call vote. Counselor Frida.
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski.
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Counselor Feckley.
Yay.
Counselor Angelini.
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger.
Yes.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier.
Yay.
I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. Twenty eight dash twenty one is granted as amended. Moving on to twenty nine dash twenty one, is the chairman ready to report?
Uh, I am, Mr. President. Petition twenty nine dash twenty one, Massapolag Road Corporation, care of Liscotti Development Corporation, request to accept Massapolag Road and Dobson Circle as public ways, along with an associated stormwater drainage easement. Um, I was, I was hoping, um, to, uh, recommend approval of this tonight. Um, there, there's, there isn't wrinkle. Uh, the prior deed, uh, actually, let me read, let me read the letter from, uh, Ray Racine, dated January sixth, twenty twenty one. Um, dear, and the, the, the letter is addressed to Caitlin Huffman. The Ray line is this petition. Dear Caitlin, the Leominster Department of Public Works has reviewed the petition to accept Massapolag Road and Dobson Circle as public ways along with associated stormwater drainage easement. The DPW offers the following comments. A street acceptance plan was submitted as part of the as-built review. The proposed deed should reference this plan, uh, I believe it does. Um, and then it goes on to say, "The stormwater drainage easement has already been transferred from Massapolag Road Corporation to Woodlands and Massapolag Homeowners Association. This can be found in deed book seven five seven seven, page two thirty three. According to the deed, the homeowners association will be maintaining the stormwater drainage easement in the sewer system. Please, please let us know if you have any questions. Sincerely, Raymond Racine." Um, in, uh, in a recent email, um, that was actually dated after hours on Friday, um, the DPW reiterated their concern that they did not want, um, to be responsible for the, um, the stormwater, um, drainage basin. Um, I, I had received a, a letter, or actually, the council received a letter from, um, the attorney at KP Law, um, indicating that all of the documents were, were fine, and they were, um, um, ready to be recorded. Uh, we have gotten all our recommendations back indicating that everybody is an improvement, uh, is, is, approves this. Um, the, the only wrinkle is my, and, and I have to admit, I don't have a, a lot of experience, um, dealing with this type of stuff, but my reading of the documents that are going to go on record, um, appear that they may be inconsistent with, um, what's already been put on record. Um, and I, I'd like, uh, further chime, um, just to make sure that, um, the homeowners association is the one that's going to be taking care of this drainage easement, uh, in that it, everyone is aware of this, particularly neighbors, and, and what their responsibility is going to be going forward. Um, and, uh, I, 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 I don't see that as being referenced in the documents, um, the, the deed and the grant of the easement. Um, so I just want to confer with Copeland Page one more time. Um, I'm glad we're, we're not live, so Counselor Cormier doesn't climb the table at me. Um, but I, I do want to make sure this is done properly, so I, I, uh, my recommendation would be further time, um, just for this, just for this, um, answer to this question. Um, I've been here long enough to know that that will create a lot of problems five, five, ten years from now, um, if we don't have it crystal clear. Uh, so I'd ask you to call my, poll my committee.
I, if you don't mind, permit me a question. Do you know if this homeowners association has ever actually been created?
I don't.
Yeah.
I know that, I know that the deed references is accurate, um, and it may vary. I did not do a title search. Um, but I, and it may have been created, and, and it may be referenced in everybody's deed that, that purchased, you know, their homes there. Um, but I, I'd rather, I'd, I'd rather make sure than, than, uh, be wrong.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Uh, I'll check with Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Uh, I support the, uh, Legal Affairs Chair, um, his recommendation.
And I'll check with Counselor.
I'd rather have it right.
Yeah, I'll, I'll check with Counselor David Cormier.
If, if, if I may, Mr. President, I, I just, I have a couple of things here that I want to, I want to touch upon. Um, I, I sent the city clerk an email earlier today to be forwarded to the planning director, and I've never, I've never heard back, um, so, and I, these were my questions, okay? I've, I've done a lot of reading of the subdivision regulations because of an issue going on in my ward a little over a year ago, so I'm very familiar with some of these things. And one of the things I'm going to reference would be on page forty, item eight of the subdivision regulations, which state that, uh, a developer has to put money aside for any defects in a detention pond. Um, and, you know, that's like, uh, money separate from a bond, separate from the regular bond. And I asked, um, the question I asked the, uh, the, um, um, Elizabeth Wood was how much money was put up to guarantee against defects to that subdivi, uh, to that, uh, detention pond? And has any of it since been returned, and if so, how much? I never heard back. And also, page fifty three, section eleven, item two, letter B, um, there is supposed to be an endowment fund that the developer is supposed to put into, um, fund, which starts the homeowners, uh, association's pool of money. Um, I don't know if that was ever established by the developer, and what would subsequently happen after that is, if each home was purchased, it would be written into their deed that they understand the homeowners' association agreement and that they are mandated to pay, uh, dues. And I can probably tell you with, I'm pretty certain that that's never happened, okay? There, there is, there is, there is a homeowners' association that looked good on paper, okay? It means nothing, I'm sure. There is no money. And, and the homeowners have never been, um, um, forced by way of, uh, having paperwork in their deed to pay any kind of dues. So, at this point, I don't think any of that's ever going to change. It's too late. The, the, the I's weren't dotted and the T's weren't crossed, okay? So, at this point, I, I So at this point, I, I think what's going to have to happen is the city is ultimately going to have to be responsible for this detention basin because there is no viable homeowners' association. This is what I've been talking about with the Planning Board for a long time now, that this stuff isn't getting done and it's coming back to bite us. And maybe I'm very wrong, but I highly doubt that any of this has been done with this subdivision. There, there's no money, there's no real homeowners' association. So we either accept it as it is and the city can take responsibility of it, or it's just gonna, it's just gonna sit there and, and get grown in and whatever else is going to happen to it. So I'm ready to vote on this thing tonight because none of these questions are going to get answered in any way, shape, or form that, that's going to make us say, oh, yeah, you know, now we're ready to move forward. It's not going to change. I really don't think it's going to change unless the Planning Board has any kind of bond, deed still on, on hold that they could shift into this endowment fund. But even if you do that, you can't go back and make the homeowner pay dues. They've already signed on the dotted line to purchase those properties. It's too late. So I'm ready to move forward.
Okay. So-
Mr. President?
Yes.
I, I think, I think the recommendation would be two to one by the Legal Affairs Committee for further time, and then, and then I would like to speak after that's established.
All right, so we have a recommendation to give twenty-nine dash twenty-one further time by a vote of two to one of the Legal Affairs Committee. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, Councilor Dombrowski?
Go ahead, Councilor.
Thank you. I, I share the, the frustration and the, and the concerns that Council Cormier has brought up. I just wanted to make a couple of points. One, he's probably right that these things haven't been done, that the homeowners' association, there, there hasn't been properly established and there hasn't been any funds allocated. And the homeowners may very well not have any idea about any of this. Number two, I do want to point out, I, I don't believe Elizabeth Wood was involved in any of that. So she's sort of inheriting, you know, a problem. I, I think it's important to point that out. And thirdly, if, if we vote on it tonight as is, there is a deed out there where the, the developer has transferred this stormwater drainage easement to the homeowners' association, which may be some defunct association. So I, I think if the DPW is ultimately going to be responsible for this, I, I think there needs to be a rescission of that deed if in fact the, the planning, I'm sorry, even if, even in fact the homeowners' association has not been established. So I, I, I think we really need to-
I can, I can clear up. I can, I can clear up a big piece of this. I just-
Okay, that'd be great.
-searched, I just searched the registry of deeds just now, and I pulled up a deed for someone who lives there. And the second page of their deed says, "Including and subject to, parcel eight is subject to, has the benefit of, is a member of the Massapug Homeowners Association created by the Declaration establishing the Woodlands at Massapug Homeowners Association dated twenty February twenty-twelve, recorded and said registry of deeds in book seven-five-seven-seven, page twenty-two-two-four." So apparently, there was a valid homeowners' association at least established. Apparently, from what I can tell, every homeowner up there is subject to it, whether they know it or not. But they, they, they have a deed that says they are, unless this particular one is the only one. So the, the issue then becomes, was there an endowment fund created and are there some dues being paid? So it sounds like, Council Dombrowski, that the deeds that were created to turn this over to the city, are you saying, or is Mr. Racine saying that the deed that is proposed to convey the, the ways to the city doesn't properly exclude the detention basin?
I think, I, I think what he's saying, and what I'm surmising from reviewing the documents, Mr. President, is that the deed includes granting the city an easement to the, to the drainage basin. But it doesn't, it doesn't say anything, it, it is silent relative to the homeowners' association. And I think that the DPW's concern is that silence, is you're giving the city an easement.
Maybe it shouldn't, maybe, maybe it just needs, maybe the city needs the easement. The fact that the city, if, maybe the, what I would suggest is, the fact that the city has the easement doesn't mean the city has the responsibility to do anything with respect to the detention basin. But in a matter of a flood or public, public disaster, you know, I, I would potentially guess that the city would want the right to go in there if they had to. And maybe what the deed needs to say is, you know, subject to the-
Mr. President?
So I'm not, I'm not finished yet, Council Frida?
No, there's, I have a point of order.
I'm not finished yet, okay?
I have a point of order, if you're speaking-
I'm clarifying, your, your point of order is going to wait, okay, till I'm finished.
Well, you're supposed to step down from your, your seat if you're going to have-
I'm gonna, I'm going to, I'm clarifying something for Council Dombrowski.
You're not clarifying, you're enter, you're entering into a debate, Councilor.
I'm clarifying something.
Okay, all right, good.
Council Frida, you're gonna have, and, and maybe, maybe, are you throwing, interrupting me?
Oh, you don't want to accept the point of order, that's fine, follow the rule, that's all.
The, the, Council, your remarks are regrettable, okay, once again.
So aren't yours. As the Council President, so aren't yours. They're condescending.
I am, all I am trying to do is put, bring some assistance to a problem that is vexing the city council by clarifying something. Okay, I'm not debating anything with anybody, okay? This is not a debate.
There's not an issue to, to step down and, and have a discussion, that's all you have to do.
It's not a debate, okay? Okay, so-
That's, that's fine, you have, you have clarification.
Uh, Council Dombrowski, what I'm, what I'm suggesting is potentially there's some way to make, satisfy the Mr. Racine's concerns, is all I'm saying.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, all I'd like to do is, is A, just have the city solicitor review this real quick to make sure that there doesn't need to be a reference to the homeowners' association in those new documents. And also, if, if the homeowners' association is the one who's going to be responsible, that, that, they need to, they need to understand that as well. I, I just wanted to be clear for everybody.
Anybody else want to weigh in? Okay, so the, the recommendation is for further time, two to one. This will be by roll call. Council Frida?
Yay.
Council Dombrowski?
Yay.
Council Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Council Feckley?
Yay.
Council Angelini?
Yay.
Council Aringer? Council Aringer?
Sorry, I'm muted, yay?
Council, uh, Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Council David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of eight to one. Twenty-nine dash twenty-one is given further time. Moving on to thirty-two dash twenty-one, is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Petition thirty-two dash twenty-one, Elizabeth Wood, Planning and Economic Development Director. Request to amend the zoning ordinance relative pertaining to the flood plain. This is a matter where the Planning Board has scheduled their public hearing for March first, twenty-twenty-one at six forty-five PM. We need their referral or their recommendation to vote. So we have scheduled our public hearing to be continued to March eighth, twenty-twenty-one at six forty PM. So my recommendation under those circumstances is further time, and I'd ask you to pull my committee.
Council Shalfo Zephyr?
I agree.
And Council David Cormier?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to give thirty-two dash twenty-one further time with a public hearing on March eighth at six forty PM. Is there any further discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor of giving thirty-two dash twenty-one further time and setting the public hearing for March eighth at six forty, please say yay, yay?
Yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, thirty-two dash twenty-one is given further time with a public hearing on March eighth at six forty. Moving on to thirty-three dash twenty-one, is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Unless there's an objection, I'd like to take petition thirty-three dash twenty-one, thirty-four dash twenty-one, and thirty-five dash twenty-one and block.
Any objection by anyone? Okay, Council, you may proceed such, such a manner.
Thirty-three dash twenty-one, Gail Feckley, amend section thirteen dash seventy-seven stop signs of the Leinster Municipal Code by adding a stop sign for southeastbound traffic on Linda Street at Day Street. Thirty-four dash twenty-one, Gail Feckley, amend section thirteen dash seventy-seven stop signs of the Leinster Municipal Code by adding a stop sign for northwestbound traffic on Tina Street at Lincoln Street. Petition thirty-five dash twenty-one, Gail Feckley, amend section thirteen dash seventy-seven stop signs of the Leinster Municipal Code by adding a stop sign for southwestbound traffic on Tina Street at Linda Street. All of these matters are scheduled for public hearing on February twenty-second. So I would request that all of these matters be given further time, and I would ask that you pull my committee.
Council Shalfo Zephyr?
I agree.
And Council David Cormier?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant thirty-three dash twenty-one, thirty-four dash twenty-one, and thirty-five dash twenty-one further time. Is there any further discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor of granting those petitions further time, please say yay, yay?
Yay.
Opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, thirty-three dash twenty-one, thirty-four dash twenty-one, and thirty-five dash twenty-one have all been given further time. Moving on to thirty-six dash twenty-one, is the chairwoman of Public Service ready to report?
I am. Thirty-six dash twenty-one, National Grid and Verizon, request to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Hill Street, National Grid, to install one jointly owned pole on Hill Street, beginning at a point approximately six hundred and seventy-five feet south of this center line from the intersection of Low Street and continuing approximately sixteen feet in a western direction. Installing a new pole, number twenty-seven dash eighty-four, with an anchor roughly twenty-seven feet from the existing pole, number twenty-seven, to allow for the anchor to set approximately five feet away using a sidewalk fixture to stay in the public way. Pole number twenty-seven dash twenty, dash eighty-four, just to help prevent pole number twenty-seven from leaning too far over. We have a public hearing on February twenty-second. The recommendation is for further time.
Okay, I'll check with members of your committee. Council Feckley?
I agree with that.
And Council Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Public Service Committee to grant thirty-six dash twenty-one further time. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, it's Council David Cormier. If the record may reflect, I will be abstaining from this as it is partially owned by, by my employer. Thank you.
Very well, Council Cormier, your abstention is so noted. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor of granting thirty-six dash twenty-one further time, please say yay, yay?
Yay.
Anyone opposed, by a vote of eight to zero to one, thirty-six dash twenty-one has been given further time. Moving on to Ways and Means, is the chairwoman of Ways and Means ready to report on your subcommittee?
I am, Mr. President. As the council knows, the Ways and Means Committee was tasked to review applications for the position of a city, Assistant City Clerk. We first met as a committee of the whole on January twentieth and reviewed the applications that we received from Union Resources in executive session. From there, we took the applications that were, we felt as though had the best qualifications, and we interviewed via go-to meeting six candidates on January twenty-seventh, again, in executive session. From there, we had, in executive session, that same meeting, we had a, a subcommittee discussion. And from those six candidates, we decided that three of them were of the quality for us to bring forward to the entire council. And those, those candidates are Christina Ellis of Athol, Massachusetts, Lila Hernandez of Leinster, Massachusetts, and Diane Reardon of Fitzford, Massachusetts. What we will be doing is bringing forth those candidates to the entire city council in a special meeting on Wednesday. And after we had identified those three candidates, the city clerk asked each one of them to submit a five-minute video so that the city council would have some of the benefit that we did to be able to see them, if not in person, at least virtually. So at the end of this meeting, Madam Clerk will be sending out those videos along with the respective resumes for the city council's review. And again, we will be meeting on Wednesday for the city council to be able to interview each of the candidates and then possibly make a disposition.
Thank you very much, Council Feckley. Any questions at this point?
Uh, Council President, but answer, I just wanted to let the councilors know that the way I'll be sending the interviews is through a Dropbox, a Dropbox link, and it is open. So anybody can view them at any time. If you have any issues viewing the videos because they're large and unable to be sent through email, just let me know so I can assist you with it.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Any other questions or concerns?
Uh, yeah, Madam Clerk, I just threw the, um, is this, or maybe to the clerk, is, uh, these videos available to the public?
Yes, the link is going to be attached to the agenda tonight on the public calendar so they can go and view it through Dropbox as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? All right, thank you very much, Council Feckley. We have John on the new business. Do you want to set up your subcommittee meeting?
Yes, and Mr. President, I was just looking at my calendar. How's, uh, February, um, how's February eighteenth look for my committee?
Thursday, February eighteenth works for me.
Council David Cormier?
Um, I'm just looking at my calendar. Yeah, that as well.
Okay, you have a time in mind, Councilor?
Uh, I'm, I'm fairly flexible. Say what they're good for.
I don't, I didn't catch that, I don't know if anyone else did. Did, did you have, have a time?
I, I said I'm fairly flexible as a city, so I defer to what works for everybody else.
How's six sound, everybody?
Six, six five.
All right, so it sounds like a six o'clock is a good time? All right, so Counselor, you'll arrange to have the clerk send out the appropriate notice for that?
I will.
Post it? Okay, very well. Madam Clerk, I'm sure you'll attend to that. We have no old business. Is there anything under the community calendar?
Counselor Vedanta, this is Counselor Feckley. Can I just, maybe I could, I could just sneak this in on the old business. I wanted to thank the Ways and Means Committee, Counselor Frida and Counselor Dombrowski for all of their good work during the, the search, and bringing these three candidates to the council. I had forgotten to mention that in my report.
Okay, very well, better late than never. Any, any, anybody else have anything on the old business or the community calendar?
Actually, Mr. President?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski on the old business. I, I, I just, on petition 29-21, if the, just to let the city clerk know, I'm going to send her an email tomorrow, when I gather my thoughts, but basically, just asking her to request Copeland and Page to view the underlying documents relative to whether or not they need to be amended to indicate the homeowners' association's responsibility, and also if she could send an email or communication to Elizabeth Wood, and just ask her if she could research the status of the homeowners' association, and, and where that stands relative to funding and what have you.
Great.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you, thank you for that, Counselor. Okay, anything else? Anybody have anything else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I'm sorry, did I hear something? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Counselor Shalfo, Counselor Dombrowski, second. All in favor, please say yay. Yay?
Yay.
Those opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, all.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
The Leominster City Council meeting is funded in part by DeCarulous Insurance Agency at www.decarulousinsuranceagency.com.